The easy thing, of course, is to just say, well, we're afraid we don't want to do anything. But then it does have consequences and those consequences can be negative, absolutely. You have to come up with work plan items to change the detailed zoning laws to match those aspirations. And that's where it does get sticky. People are very resistant to change. A lot of times, something that'll seem very, to us, very rational in the comp plan, once you bring it up in front of the residents of Boulder, they will, oftentimes, certain groups will just come up in arms and say, "We can't do that because it's too threatening to our neighborhoods."
Hello, Boulder and the wider world. Welcome to the Sharing Boulder Podcast. My name is Philip O'Grane and I'm here with my co-host David Adamson. And we are pleased to introduce our guest today, Dave Insigne. If you are a developer that wants to build more housing in Boulder of any significant size, then your plans are probably going to be reviewed by the Boulder Planning Board. The Boulder Planning Board is a committee that reviews development projects to make sure that they conform to Boulder zoning ordinances and are consistent with various land use goals. In addition to reviewing projects, the other primary role of the planning board is to help shape land use policy in the city and county of Boulder. One major focus of effort is to help author the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, which is a document that articulates our collective values around land use and lays out a detailed outline for how to realize that vision. The current comprehensive plan is 165 pages and covers a wide range of subjects such as housing, open space, the economy, social equity, transportation, energy use, among many others. The plan is full of beautiful photos and detailed maps and is a fantastic resource for appreciating all the work that goes into making our city and county a better place to live for its residents. So you should definitely check it out. All members of the planning board are community volunteers that are appointed by city council. They represent the public and are a voice from the community that helps shape land use decisions in Boulder. Our guest today is the senior member and chair of the Boulder Planning Board, Dave Insigne. We spoke with Dave about what the planning board is and what they do, and then had a very interesting conversation about the gap that exists between the vision laid out in the comprehensive plan and the reality as we see it on the ground. Our conversation covered a range of subjects, including diversity and inclusion, traffic, and the challenge of changing zoning laws. We hope you enjoy our conversation with Dave Insigne. Hi, thank you for joining me today. I'm here with my co-host David Adamson. And we are kicking off a podcast where we explore housing issues in Boulder and ways to make Boulder better by being more inclusive and creating housing that is affordable and within reach and makes our city better. And today, I'm really excited to introduce our guest, David Insigne, who is a member of Boulder's planning board, which is an appointment position. And so, David, I would love for you to introduce yourself and to tell us, what the heck is the planning board?
Well, thanks both of you for having me. This is great to be here today and fun to be participating in the podcast. So yeah, I've been on the City of Boulder Planning Board for four years now, and it's a five-year term, so I'm going into my fifth year next year. So I'll be kind of the senior member of planning board after this month, which is kind of exciting. Yeah, getting involved in planning board was, for me, a way to get involved in my local community, kind of give back a little bit. I love Boulder. And just to give some background on how I got there, as a kid, I was just very interested in politics. In 1972, I remember getting very excited about the McGovern-Nixon campaign and kind of wondering if McGovern, you know, as an idealistic kid, I thought maybe McGovern could beat Nixon, you know? So then I followed Watergate and all the things that happened during the 70s. In 1979, after a couple of years at Brigham Young University, which is a Mormon religious university, you may know, I came out as gay and got involved in the LGBT movement for many years, participated in workplace equality, nondiscrimination laws. Really, it gave me an opportunity to participate in something where we actually had quite a discernible effect on society. So for me, that really informed that getting involved can really make a huge difference. And as a result, I'm very, I find myself to be very much enthusiastic participating in the system. I don't let things get bother me too much when they get down in the weeds or when you have to spend a lot of time agonizing over things because I find that the results can be amazing. And adapting and keeping up with the changing world is just a very, something that I'm very passionate about. I think we need to be adaptable, we need to respond as things change. So what happened in four years ago was, if you remember the election, Donald Trump was elected. I was devastated. I thought, how am I going to get through the next four years with all this stuff going on in Washington? And I decided that, well, people had advised me I might want to get a little bit more involved with local politics. I had been writing for the newspaper and writing commentary and thinking about issues. So I applied for a couple of boards. And these are boards that the city council then looks at the applicants and decides whether to appoint them. So the elected officials make that decision. And so I applied for the transportation board and the planning board. And to my surprise, as a new applicant, I was chosen, which was a great honor. So that's how I got on, and I can talk more about what the work has been like.
Yeah, so I've seen some of these campaigns for new, you know, we need new people for the planning board or for one advisory board or the next. And I've had some difficulty, actually, because I haven't shown up to the meetings, having some understanding of what actually goes on. So would you mind explaining just sort of like the mechanics of what you do, what you would expect to see if you came to a meeting?
Yeah.
What your role is?
Absolutely. Well, you know, fundamentally, we are a sounding board representing the public so that the public feels that they have a role in decisions that are made that affect them in the city. So everything from the planning, which I do, which is land use and zoning and things like that, to recrea, parks and recreation, open space, transportation. So there's boards for all, you know, there's probably over a dozen boards and commissions that work on these kinds of things. So we get appointed, and the first thing you do is you meet with a lawyer and you learn how, what our responsibilities are. You might think that you can come in ta-da and just like do anything you want, but actually, we're legally required to work under the constraints of how public policy is implemented. And it's very important that we learn that. The city can be legally liable if we don't behave well. So there's two general areas we get involved in. One is the quasi-judicial, where we actually act as judges and we decide on individual development projects that are going to be implemented. And then we are involved in the legislative, which would be the overall landscape of what the land use vision is for our city. And in that legislative work, we do, we deal with the overall comprehensive plan for our valley here, which is, we work on with the county. And we come up with all the aspirations for Boulder and what we want it to look like. And then that translates into the zoning that kind of sets all the details of what is and isn't allowed in certain areas of the city. So we have an impact on that. And then, once we get to those individual quasi-judicial projects, we apply those laws fairly to everybody who comes in front of us.
So if I'm a developer and I want to build some new residential thing, development project, I have to get on the docket for the planning board and have you all review that to make sure it's within the zoning ordinances? Is that too simplified?
Well, that's right. And then I can embellish that by saying that if your project is, fits into criteria that is small enough or it's within the zoning laws definitions enough, it may not trigger a planning board review. It may just be a by right project. So if you're building a single-family home on a lot that allows a single-family home, you aren't going to probably have to go in front of planning board. If you're building a 60-unit apartment complex, that's big enough that it would trigger planning board. So there are very detailed criteria under which things go before us and which don't. Some come before us as a call-up, meaning that if we just don't call it up, it just goes forward because it's not particularly out of, you know, the asking for much out of the zoning or whatever. But if they're really big, they will have a mandatory review. And I could talk a little bit about the two different kinds of reviews that we have, if you'd like, for those.
Yes, please. Go for it.
Yeah, so we have, generally, they will fall into two stages. The first stage will be a concept review, where we get kind of the general parameters of the project and we kind of look at it from a big picture standpoint and see if we think it's going to, you know, be an appropriate project. And we can give all kinds of feedback during concept review because it's at a time where the developer is still kind of working on it and can hopefully make some pretty significant changes to the plan. And then they'll go back and, gosh, within, you know, months to a year, you know, a couple of years later even, we'll get the site review, which will be the, everything with all the i's dotted and t's crossed and ready to permit. And then, at that point, we may try to tweak it a little bit, but if they've taken into account a lot of the stuff we said during concept review, it should be okay. But we have a fairly powerful position because if we say no, we can send projects away, you know, just completely deny projects. So from that standpoint, we're a pretty strong body.
And so that, those denials typically come with pointers to the relevant city ordinances? That like, so I assume you're an expert now in the specifics of all the zoning laws. Is that true or is it kind of more higher level than that?
Well, you learn as you go along. The planning board oftentimes has both experts in zoning and development, people who maybe have some urban planning experience, and some people like me who are just citizens. I come from the tech world, but I'm smart enough to learn some things. So yeah, I've spent a lot of time looking at the city code. And yes, we do have to have reasons to deny. We really need to keep the city's legal vulnerabilities in mind. We can't open them up to lawsuits by just gratuitously saying, "Ah, we don't like this, we're just going to do it." We really need to point to criteria as to why we're making a particular decision.
Well, Dave, one theme we wanted to explore as we get into our, why it's so contentious, land use here, is the seeming gap between the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, which starts with a bunch of core values, which I'm going to try to put up in a sec, and then the reality of development as it occurs. And I just wondered if you could talk about the planning board's role in the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan and what it is and the other bodies, before we get into why there might be a gap or why some perceive a gap between our values and the reality of land use in Boulder?
Well, yes, when we developed that comp plan, we actually, it's a four-body document. It's actually a collaboration between the county and the city. So it drives decisions about areas that we may want to annex into the city. So actually, we are one of the four bodies, the planning board, the county planning commission, and then the county commissioners and the city council, the elected officials. So those are the four bodies that actually participate in this document. So each of us, when this thing's up for review, has a lot of input into this document, to the extent where our boards come up with wording and make all kinds of edit suggestions and work with senior planners and city staff to get a vision for the county and the city. So once that's in place, then you have to come up with work plan items to change the detailed zoning laws to match those aspirations. And that's where it does get sticky. You get, people are very resistant to change. And when, a lot of times, something that'll seem very, to us, very rational in the comp plan, once you bring it up in front of the residents of Boulder, they will, oftentimes, certain groups will just come up in arms and say, "We can't do that because it's too threatening to our neighborhoods." And a lot of times, it has to do with narratives around what the impacts of these changes might be. And I find that sometimes the ideas of what the impacts might be are valid, but sometimes they're overblown. Like, for example, you know, if you think about a particular zone, like, say, a residential zone, if you were to build every lot to the max build-out of, you know, with these horrible blocks, you would end up with a horrible neighborhood. And that, yeah, I mean, you could conclude that because these, a certain size house is allowed on every lot, that that could happen. But in reality, that doesn't really happen. It's based on economics and it's based on what makes sense to build. So I think people get scared a lot of times and they jump to conclusions, and then we meet up with resistance. And you do have to, you know, the comp plan is great, but until you change the zoning laws, you really haven't changed the very detailed parameters under which those, you know, things like size and density and the number of dwelling units, all that is determined.
Well, I wonder if you could just expound a little bit on whether you see a gap between these values that we have up on the screen and the reality of land use in Boulder and why that is?
I do. See, I do. There's a lot of language in the current version of the comp plan that was, that really talks about how we want to move towards things like 15-minute neighborhoods. We want to increase the diversity of housing types in zones. We want to have more mixed use. There's a lot of creative things that make places interesting. You know, the kind of buzzword placemaking is all about how to make an interesting area. And when you have outdated zoning that's kind of a monoculture that applies to large swaths of your city, it can really discourage good placemaking. So it's a challenge to keep yourself from becoming just kind of a faceless suburb with a lot of homes on standard-sized lots when you're dealing with zones that were put in place in the 50s and 60s to encourage that. So we, you know, the idea would be, that I would have, would be to look for ways that we can, at least certainly with new zoning, but also even looking at existing places where we can try to increase what you can do in these areas so that we can have better outcomes. And the other area that you can get in trouble with, with zoning, is that it can be exclusionary and it can result in inequitable outcomes that can make it very difficult for you to have a diverse community. And we do see that in Boulder. And it's a tough issue because as, a lot of the people who really are very hesitant to want to migrate our zoning laws get accused of being frankly racist. And that's troubling because I don't think that they intend to be that way. But, and so it's a very, it's a very sticky issue to try to discuss. We have white fragility and we have people who don't like to hear these things. So how do you discuss the fact that something that you're kind of instinctually want to support because you don't like change, you want to keep things the way you're used to, can have outcomes that are actually against our values, that actually exclude people and can result in communities that don't have enough diversity? So I think that's the other kind of problem with not being able to migrate, to have more dynamic approach to your zoning laws and be able to change with the times.
Maybe you could talk a little bit about that ignorance of the racial impact of our zoning? Because there is ignorance of an issue, and then there's negligence, once you really understand. And do you think in Boulder, this is the issue of white fragility and white people just not really understanding at all? How can they see things from the perspective of African-Americans or whatever, other people of color? But now is the time when we're becoming more familiar with that. And of course, there's a lot of greater understanding about how single-family zoning and car-dependent zoning was really a racist, had its origins in the desire to segregate the races. And certainly, we'd agree that our zoning kind of typically segregates people by race and income. And so maybe you could talk about how we can evolve, you know, given that white difficulty in perceiving that. And now we're trying to, you know, many folks are grappling with that. How do you see that playing out and how can we support, you know, some positive outcomes there?
Yeah, I mean, certainly, there have been some victories that we've had in Boulder. We have an inclusionary housing program that, all-new development. Every single new home, even if it's just a single-family home, has to be 25% affordable. So you either do that, if you're making an apartment complex, you make 25% of your units affordable minimum, or you pay an inclusionary housing fee at the equivalent of that. So, and then we can, we can develop affordable housing with that.
That is only new units, right?
Right.
If you are remodeling a house that was, you know, a small tract home, and then you're remodeling it or replacing it, you don't have to pay that, right? There's no, you don't contribute to affordable housing and there's no need for us to change it. And so we have, for most of the town, which is predominantly the residential areas are predominantly low-density and single-family. That means that that is cast in amber, right?
Well, that, you know, that's part of the limitations of the programs. Okay, so, so yes, we have this pretty, pretty good, I think it's recognized as one of the better affordable housing programs. But, but there are limitations to it. Like you said, if somebody wants to upgrade their 1,500-square-foot house to an 8,000-square-foot mansion, and the lot is big enough to do that, they can just do that. And then the outcome is this multimillionaire's house, and it doesn't pay into the inclusionary housing fund. And we're always looking for additional levers that people would accept to work on that. So that's an area that we could look at, you know? Should we be imposing fees on those kinds of changes? And we could. Now, one thing to keep in mind with, we are actually restricted by state law because of previous very conservative administrations who put in place things like, "We can't have rent control." There are certain ways that we're, that make it very hard for us to do affordable housing. So we have to also operate under fairly strict state regulations on what we're really allowed to do. So that makes it challenging. But, but yeah, you're right, you're right. It is, it has its limits. And then, then there's the larger landscape of affordability beyond just, you know, the people who really need very affordable homes, maybe the middle-income folks who just can't afford these really high-end things. And the more high-end your community gets, the more out of reach it becomes for that set, for the segment of people who are, hey, maybe you need a starter home. Maybe you've got a pretty good job, but you can't afford something that's $800,000 or $900,000. So it's a, it's a very interesting, interesting landscape of challenges to figure out how to address those things.
Well, I'd like to, you to expound a little bit about something that I see is frequently missing. It's natural for people to be fearful of change. But there is a vast change going on, right? A big demographic change, as we were discussing, where we're gentrifying, you know, we're getting a decrease in population, but a pretty dramatic increase in the per capita wealth of people who own homes in the city. And maybe you could talk a little bit about, you know, the problems with that change?
If you leave things the way they are because you're comfortable with them and you allow yourself to be talked into fearing change, changing zoning to be, say, more accommodating to different types of homes, maybe some infill, maybe some... We went through the whole ADU battle, right? And so we do have an improvement in our accessory dwelling unit landscape here. But, you know, and again, that's a, that's a success. But, but the more resistance there is to evolve, the more you do see outcomes that are just based on, okay, what is the free market resulting? So if, and then you find that the economic forces kind of control you. And so, sure, yeah, I mean, if Boulder's a very, very attractive place to live, it's going to attract a lot of wealthy people and you will start to see those economic pressures pull you into a more and more precious, more unattainable community and less diverse. And as a result, you know, I think that many would say that it becomes a less interesting community if it doesn't, if it loses that diversity, right? So similarly, with the form that I was talking about, if you don't let the zoning have more vibrant form outcomes, more interesting neighborhoods, more walkable neighborhoods, a lot of times you find that the backfiring is that you get kind of blighted areas. So you see these strip malls that haven't, the zoning hasn't been updated to accommodate new form types. And so they just kind of start to die because you haven't actually put in place some zoning that's going to encourage something more exciting and vibrant in that area, perhaps with some housing. So, so yeah, I think that the easy thing, of course, is to just say, "Well, we're afraid we don't want to do anything." But then it does have consequences and those consequences can be negative, absolutely.
It is a change. We are changing it. And I've had a lot of pushback when I bring up the idea of diversity deserts. And that Boulder is coming evermore a great diversity desert, but...
When I think about your role on the planning board, it seems, and what you just said about the gap between the values as they're written down in the Boulder Comprehensive Plan and what we see when we walk through our city, it seems like the planning board kind of has two possible levers. One is recommendations for zoning law, zoning ordinance changes. And the other is perhaps maybe the way you prioritize or the kinds of projects that you give an audience to. So I guess my first question is, what are some, what are some zoning ordinance changes that you would like to see made?
Okay, well, first of all, I will just say too, that the city staff gets a lot of credit because they, they do a really good job of trying to negotiate with developers before they get to planning. So you talked about what it would be like if you were a developer. You would have to work with city staff and they would, they would hold your feet to the fire on a lot of these things before it even gets to us. So I have to give credit for them. And a lot of times, you know, there's public opposition from certain segments of the public for some of these things, and they have to deal with that as well. There are specific zoning law changes that I'm in favor of. You know, and some people think I'm a little conservative sometimes about these things, but I know what a fight they can be. We had one zoning law change. We were going to try to go into our largest lot, largest home zones and loosen this zoning to allow for some subdivisions potentially, some pocket neighborhoods, maybe multiple, more multiple dwelling unit options on these large lots. And because we targeted specific zones, we got so much pushback that we didn't have enough support from the planning board and the city council to move forward. It was just killed. So my, my next thought was, well, what if we just looked across all the zones and tried to increase the number of housing types in each zone? So in these, in like RL1, where we have single-family homes, what if we just allowed duplexes? And we could even like have a schedule under which, you know, maybe only a certain number within a certain radius for a while and then up that kind of over time if it's working out and just try to get the public comfortable with these changes on a gradual basis. So that would be one way to look at it, is just to kind of, maybe in each of the zones, so these two large lot zones don't feel singled out. We could just propose one additional housing unit per every zone. And it is, the term upzoning has a very negative connotation with the public and people really get crazy about it. So it's always, when you propose these things, it's always a little bit of a challenge to try to figure out how to get public support for it. But I would definitely want to move towards those things. I'd also like to look at spot zoning along corridors that would... that would allow us to have more flexibility at the edge of some of these monoculture neighborhoods to, uh, put little neighborhood centers, uh, that aren't just in the strip mall, but maybe kind of go out into the neighborhoods a little more, maybe some coffee shops and businesses and things that, uh, that could make your neighborhood more interesting to walk in. Uh, so I, I think that, uh, that, that would be increasing the uses in the zones. Uh, so I talked about housing types. I talked about uses. Uh, and then, um, I think we're a little bit, um, conservative about density and intensity in areas where we can put density and intensity in. And I think that we have very restrictive height limits, uh, and we can, we can look at ways to encourage. Uh, if you, if you show that you've got good community outcomes in mind, you can get a little bit more height up to our 55 foot limit. Uh, so right now in the city, we're restricting almost every area to 35 feet, which is just barely three stories. Uh, but it would be, it would be, I think, uh, useful to look at, um, expanding where you could have go up to 55 feet is if you could show that you're offering some community benefits.
Hey, having greater diversity benefits us all. Why having, um, less car dependence benefits us all? Why having more middle income job holders living in the city, you know, reduces congestion and pollution?
What really motivates people to get behind something that may feel a little uncomfortable to them? And it's, it's really change, right? Uh, people look at the past through those colored lenses and they think that the, we all think that the seventies was some magical time where we all ran around free and had so much space. And now just things are getting worse and worse and traffic's getting worse and worse. Uh, there's a, there's a narrative in people's mind that tends to accentuate the negative. And I, I always come down on, uh, you know, trying to counter that with, uh, you know, the, the, the stories, what's, what's, what's in it for all of us. Generally, when you, you can tell the stories of, of outcomes and, and make people comfortable with outcomes, uh, through, uh, through just positive, positive messaging. I think that, that that can counter a lot of that negativity. It is hard because we live in a pretty negative world right now, as we know. Uh, at the national level, politics is almost completely negative driven, right? And this is, this is nasty stuff. So how, what are positive things? Well, you touched on one of them. I mean, the, the environment is such an important value to Boulder that can be, uh, used, uh, you know, the sustainability and environmental outcomes to show, uh, very explicitly that these are better outcomes. When you have a transportation hubs with people living close to those transportation hubs, you have people, uh, not using, uh, car, single occupancy vehicles to drive everywhere. Uh, when you have, uh, really good, uh, alternative, uh, transportation methods for people to use. Uh, and when you have denser, less intensive, uh, buildings that are built to better standards, uh, you can, you can move your, your, your city towards our net zero goal. And that's, uh, that's pretty, pretty compelling to Boulder people. So I think that's a really good one for us to talk about. And the other one, uh, the other one is just to acknowledge that, uh, we, if we can make Boulder more diverse, we're going to be, we're going to feel like, we're, we're going to stop feeling like we're such an exclusive white community, which I think a lot of people really struggle with. Uh, and I, you know, and I think that people beat themselves up a lot about, about it. And, and a lot of times there's, you know, it isn't the fault of any specific people, but, but we do, we do end up with these outcomes. And I think that, uh, people do celebrate diversity in Boulder. And that's another, another narrative that we can use. Having, having, and showing people that it's a win-win for everybody that these outcomes are. So trying, trying to help people understand outcomes better would be good, I think. And just one exam, one very specific example, there, we're working on the East Boulder sub-community plan right now, and there's a community task force working on this. There, it, it's, it's got a lot of really cool options in it. And I think it's going to take advantage of, uh, of, uh, area, an area that is ripe for evolving a bit. It's all that area with kind of like, um, low, uh, light industrial buildings and stuff in East Boulder. Uh, a lot of, uh, along the frontage road on foothills there. So we, we have a lot of like little pocket, uh, businesses, uh, wineries, uh, appliance, supply stores, um, all kinds of cool, you know, backpacking companies, backpack companies. So we, we have a lot of really cool little businesses there. So, um, with the East Boulder Subcommune Plan, I think that it's very interesting because we have a lot of really cool ways that we can use this land, which can be used better. But then people get nervous because the free market outcomes oftentimes mean that if you do open it up to residential, you might find yourself, uh, with gentrification. So you might find that, uh, the little backpack store that makes, uh, makes products or the little, uh, so you know, the guy who ripstop who, who repairs tents may be forced out because there's now this upward pressure. So those are really valid concerns and that's something that I think we need to continue to work on. While we, while we do loosen our restrictions, we need to look at what kind of regulations are legal and at our disposal to assure that we don't, that we can control, uh, those, uh, prices, those, uh, how, how, without pricing people out of the market.
So why, why Dave, are folks who are generally afraid of change? And we saw this at planning board last night, concerned about the little business operator. But they don't seem concerned in my experience so far with the larger gentrification and the creation of ever greater diversity desert. They oppose more units, but in, in my experience, they, there, there's no one out there protesting in the existing neighborhoods. Oh, now this little house is being developed into a McMansion. Now this little house is a, you know, only for super wealthy people. You know, I don't, I don't hear that same concern. Why do you think that is? Or do you see that? Or, and if so, why?
Well, um, I, yes, you're right, um, because, um, there's no one to complain to about those. Cause it's allowed by right in our zoning. People do complain, but, but there's no, uh, there, there wasn't any action taken by anybody like me on a planning board uh, that made that happen.
I do want to push back a little bit, like at the Balsam. I mean, you considered the Balsam project, I believe, at Balsam and, and Broadway. And, and then nine forty North Street, for example, or Fifth and Pearl. I mean, they're, uh, twenty seven Pine, there've been a number of high-end luxury housing developments. And I haven't seen the surrounding neighbors come out and oppose those high-end luxury projects.
Give me an example again.
So the, the Balsam, which is the five units at, at Balsam and Broadway, they're 2.5 to 3.3 million dollars apiece. Nine forty North Street replaces an old rental housing, uh, with six 1.5 million dollar condos. Um, twenty seven Pine is 13 condos that are all, except for two priced at about a million dollars or up.
Those are all projects that were done without planning board involvement. My point is that, um, if they are allowed by the zoning and it's just, uh, gentrification that's allowed by the zoning and planning board isn't asked to weigh in, uh, then yes, people will complain. I mean, I've heard people complain about the upscaling of their neighborhood. But the only time that they really have someone specific to, you know, that they can say, ah, it was your decision that caused this to happen is if we're involved or if city council's involved, uh, and then the voices get louder. But I do, I do think that people are concerned about, uh, large houses that get built by right. The, the one, uh, over, um, on Iris, who's owned, owned by the CEO of Zayo, uh, that one is enormous. Planning board never looked at that. It was done by right because of the size of the lot.
Your point is so, is so good. So what about a little consideration, like we have the National Environmental Policy Act? What if we inserted a little place to complain? Your point is excellent about an affordability in, uh, impact, uh, aspect of a project.
Yeah, there's probably a lot of, uh, a lot of, uh, areas there that are ripe for possible, uh, stopgaps. Uh, and that was what Large Homes Large Lots was trying to start doing. And you know, that, that's where you go, you know, you can get a little discouraged sometimes because, uh, these things are, uh, hard to move. And you have to remind yourself, well, I'm just one, one person doing what I can. But you're right. I mean, there's, uh, if we had the will, uh, we could probably, uh, put in place a number of different stopgaps against that kind of thing.
I, I have a question I'd like to ask. One of the tensions I feel like that you hear about with respect to changing zoning laws or increasing the amount of housing is on the one hand, it's like, uh, we have to do something because nothing is affordable. And on the other hand, it's like, oh, what if, um, my property value decreases because of some zoning change? I, I'm, I'm curious to know if you have any evidence that, you know, different changes in the zoning laws could lead to lower home values. Like, I mean, it seems like in the data, it seems so clear that the better we make our city and the more inclusive and the more walkable and all these things we love about, um, walkable neighborhoods and, and, um, you know, interesting places, that those things will make housing values go up. Yeah, I guess I'll just have you comment on that.
No, I, I think that you're right. I think that is a narrative that is usually not true. Usually if you have more options for how you can use your property, um, that actually helps your land value. Uh, I, I find, uh, you know, of course there, you know, there's always, um, specifics that may or may not cause a particular property to go up or down. But, but yeah, if you, if you can put duplex, uh, where a single family home is, my understanding is usually that ends up being a more, uh, financially attractive thing to do than to have a single home. Because in general, dwelling units are what kind of drive, uh, your profitability.
And then if, if I put a duplex on my property, is there any evidence that the neighbor's property's value goes down?
Well, yeah, I, I think that's the, the thing that gets, uh, people say that there's really not that much evidence that it does. No.
Voting fraud, voting fraud. Where is the voting fraud?
Yeah.
So maybe that's one angle we could, we could push on to some extent. You know, I, I imagine that some people who have bought houses in the last five years have, have really leveraged the debt on those houses because they're expensive, right? And so if, if you had a way to make their land, their property more valuable by changing the zoning laws and increase the amount of housing, perhaps, you know, the other half of that duplex is more affordable than what's currently available. I don't know.
I, I think that's, that there's probably a lot of validity to that. I, I think, and that's where I kind of butt up against kind of level of, of knowledge about, uh, urban planning and real estate and all of the machinations and the financial aspects that go into what a developer does. I'm not a huge expert in all of the, all the economics of these things. Uh, and there are people out there who, um, uh, you know, Harmon Zuckerman, who's rotating off our planning board, uh, this month is really a lawyer who, who works with developers a lot. Uh, and he could probably provide some really good insight into a lot of those economic drivers. By the time they get to planning board, a lot of that stuff is kind of been worked out. So it's just, we know it. They've decided it's a profitable project and they're going to do it. But I, I think that, uh, you know, there's a lot, a lot of, uh, of territory there that I've never been involved with, uh, and, uh, there are people out there who do that as a living.
So, so coming back to the planning board, um, one question I wanted to ask early on and, and didn't get around to is, what do you feel like the planning board does well? And, uh, what do you think could be improved the most?
Well, I, I think, um, the planning board does a good job of helping people who are interested enough to come and participate in these decisions to understand what we have to do to apply laws that were put in place. And so I think we do a pretty good job of sticking to criteria and making decisions based on criteria. And as a result, that's a fair playing field for our public, uh, because, uh, we apply those criteria in an unbiased way, I think, to, uh, all these different projects. So I think we do that well. But I think the big obvious thing that we struggle with is because we have these insights into things that could change, getting over the, our ideological differences and the things, because within planning board, we have differences of opinion on these things. It's not, you know, what I'm telling you, my, my ideas, uh, there are people who wouldn't agree with me, of course. So we don't all agree about, uh, the long-term solutions to, to some of the pressures that we know exist. And we are dealing, like I said many times during this interview, we're dealing with a public that's resistant to change. So I think that's what planning board has trouble with. And I'll just also add, this year has been uniquely difficult. COVID has put the city in a, in a real bind from how much they can take on. So I was watching the city council retreat that they have every January. And this year, trying to get something new onto the work plan is very difficult. And all of this stuff, all of these legislative changes, uh, that we need have to go on the work plan so they can eventually become law and ordinance. And if they don't get on the work plan, nobody's working on them. So that's a hurdle for us. And, uh, and then it's, it's kind of like when you're in a, when you're working for a company and you see that you just don't have enough resources to get things done that you want to. It's, it's that kind of frustration.
Well, Dave, I'm wondering if we can look at that in a little more depth. And I just wanted to challenge your point a little bit, which is a, a natural one, that the community is resistant to change. But I, I'm wondering if there's, it's more an issue that a portion of the community, the, the community that has more of the discretion and time and money and resources to be involved politically. As so many of those people are, are landowners and property owners and probably, probably single family property owners who are concerned, they like their existing format and they worried about changing it. So maybe those people are resistant to change, but, but so many other people, like I think about young people, like they, they don't have any hope at all of ever living in Boulder or affording a house in Boulder. They, they just like, what? I could never buy here. So I'm wondering if it's really a, a problem of civic engagement and are offering to younger people. I wonder if you could talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, you, you, you hit on a very important source of frustration. And that is the opposition is easier than advocacy for something. Stopping things is easier than coming up with solutions and doing things. And a lot of times, uh, you're right, the, the people who, uh, have the time and the resources to get involved are the, the louder voices who are opposing. And we get very organized, uh, neighborhood groups who will come together and make very slick presentations and have lots and lots of, uh, of very impressive material to fight against stuff. You don't find, uh, the same level of, of people being able to get involved necessarily for other viewpoints. It, it is a challenge. I, I would love to see ways that we could bring more people into the conversation. Getting more, uh, voices from different, different viewpoints and, and different, uh, segments of our society is a huge challenge. And, uh, I'll tell you, one of the most important barriers to it is social inequity. Uh, we have, um, I've been working as an emergency response connector in my neighborhood for COVID and meeting with people from the manufactured home communities weekly to, to hear about the, the really important needs of our underrepresented population for something like the results of a pandemic and how much more vulnerable these folks are. So we've got folks who are really dealing with issues that are very much more, more immediate than land use. Uh, and how do we reach out, uh, you know, so, and, but these are the folks that would be the most important to add voices to the decisions that are being made. Cause you know, clearly the, the people who, who are being shut out of the Boulder dream, uh, to some extent are the ones that we'd like to hear from as well as those who are just comfortably enjoying their beautiful home on, on, uh, on the foot, the slopes of the foothills. So, uh, so yes, that I, I think that, that, that is a huge question, but it's also, in some ways, it's not even fair to ask those folks to give up their time.
If you're going to propose a new affordability, uh, affordable housing complex, the, the surrounding neighbors know who they are and they, and they can immediately identify themselves and show up and be politically active. The future residents of that, uh, that new development don't know who they are yet. So it's hard to organize and coalesce around in, in, in a, in an impactful way, in the same way.
To planning board's credit, I've seen time and time again where we've listened to hours and hours of well-organized messages, but I, I've also seen the planning board do a pretty good job of realizing that that there's two sides to that, and there is a side that we haven't heard much of. It helps if we hear a few voices. But, uh, but, uh, yeah, there, it, it can become pretty obvious. And, uh, a lot of times, um, what the city staff tries to do to counteract that is they'll do surveys so that they can show through survey results what the real pulse of the public is. But even then, you know, the people who answer the surveys are oftentimes, again, the people with the inside track and with the, with, uh, you know, the people who have lived here a long time and know how everything works and kind of know how to jump on these things where, uh, so it's easy to leave out, uh, populations. And like you said, populations that aren't entrenched. And like you said, populations that aren't entrenched and know each other and kind of organized.
You know, I just feel that this narrative of all Boulderites are resistant to change and we don't want to rock the boat. This idea sort of grates against our image as an innovative community and a socially just community and environmentally responsible community. And going back to the comprehensive plan and the gap between the values and the reality, it just seems so, you know, hugely discordant. And I am just wondering if you can help us understand how we could support the people who are fearful and concerned to accept that the better angels of their nature. You know, they have, and they love to go to, folks that are wealthy, they like to go to Europe and experience different cities and they love a clean environment and they love being outdoors. And it just seems, I feel like I'm missing something, like these people that I know and love that are my neighbors. Because we all lose by not having diversity. We all lose by having more air pollution because of folks having to commute in.
Having empathy and being human with people is important. These are hard things to talk about because I hate to point out these hypocritical.
Growing edges. Let's call them growing edges.
Yeah, these kind of awful discordance between your stated values and the outcomes of some of the things that you decide to advocate for. A less loaded one than racial outcomes is traffic. So that's a good one to use as an example. Because I think that people might be able to see that they, out of one side, they're really, really concerned about our living up to Boulder's Climate Action Plan. And they understand that we are trying to institute policies where cars pay for themselves. The public doesn't subsidize all this real estate for people to park their cars. And we don't just make it an easy track for cars all the time. So there's something that's much less loaded. Because if you're aggravated by traffic and no place to park, it's a little bit different than being accused of racism. So that's one that I oftentimes use as an example of, gee, maybe we should think a little bit more about our values. And instead of coming and always saying, oh, this parking reduction's too much. We need to put more parking on the side or people are going to spill over to my neighborhood and park in front of my house and all this stuff. You know, all these things are very, in the end, they're pretty selfish things. And they aren't in line with our attitudes towards trying to de-emphasize car traffic. So sometimes I'll go to that one because it is a little bit less loaded. And it is something that people will sometimes actually say, aha, you're right.
I love that one because in my vision of Boulder, as we bring in more people, we try to reduce the number of cars. And we have so, we have so much asphalt in Boulder and it's so ugly and so harmful. And, you know, and it's, I think when people complain about increased density, they really mean they don't want more cars. And, you know.
Every, everything we look at, the traffic and concerns become one of the biggest complaints about it. Because, well, for one thing, it isn't, you're not saying that you don't like the people. So you're, you just concentrate on their cars.
They just don't like their cars, yeah.
But yeah, the cars are a huge one. So I think it's kind of a way to kind of guide people along. Because it's a pain point issue. Places like New York City that have had to really completely change and most European cities. And, you know, obviously we're a much smaller place than that. But they achieved a certain pain point and then made it pretty much, nah, you can't do it. We don't accommodate cars. It's over. I mean, it really is. In New York, it's over. I mean, if you want to park a car, you have to pay $40 for three hours, you know? I mean, it's just not something that's accommodated. So.
Boulder has so much potential for car light living, right? Because of the bike paths and the nice weather and.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
That's such a tough one. That's such a tough one, too. I, people love to bike in this town. They just love it. They know it feels great to bike. But they also are very protective of their car. And they, they want other people not to drive and, right? It's a very odd feeling. And I think it has to do with personal liberty and freedom, which has been encouraged in our, in the Enlightenment and in our society. And I understand that concern. The right to bike and not breathe someone else's exhaust. You know, their PM 2.5 and their toluene. And I mean, I would like to have the liberty of not breathing that. And I bet they would, too.
I think those ways of framing, framing what is equitable from a different perspective are very valid. And like I was saying, understanding how we subsidize cars is very, it's a very valid thing to bring up. That, you know, that we don't always look at, we always just think that because it's always been this way, we should just expect it. But we, once we break it down and realize all the different negative aspects that that lifestyle has, and we've been kind of led down this path, well, that, and I think people, people understand that. So I bring it up just because it's a similar kind of challenge to what we're facing with people realizing what their, you know, what their reluctance to take on new and innovative approaches, what that might result in.
David, I just want to say a very heartfelt thank you for your public service and for spending time with us today. I learned a lot about the Boulder's Planning Board and it was just really delightful to talk with you.
I could go on and on about this stuff. I love it. So thank you for having me.
So I'd like to end, I'd like to end with a quick roundtable where we each share something that we've been reading or listening to or watching in the last week or so and maybe just give a one or two-minute elevator pitch on that. I attended Bicycle Colorado's Moving People Forward Conference, which just finished last night. It was a virtual conference this time. Six sessions spread out over four days. And it was really good. I, the keynote speaker that opened the conference was talking about reparations through the lens of mobility. And it was kind of hard for me to wrap my brain around. And I need to go back and listen to it again to give a, to give a good summary of what she was talking about. But I found it challenging. And I, you know, one of the clear themes of the conference was diversity, equity and inclusion. And they kept circling back to those themes in every session that they did. And I'm looking forward to being able to share the YouTube videos when they come out and the links. I just thought it was an excellent conference.
Well, I have, you know, as a, someone who has helped create a community land trust, community land trust, I've been getting a fan of Henry George and I'll just leave it at that. But I encourage everyone to read up about Henry George, famous American economist and historian, the 19th century. But this history of owning the earth by Andrew Linklater. And it's very interesting just to see how that transition, especially focuses on England, how it was transformed from sort of joint, in a feudal period, a sort of joint ownership by the folks using the land, the vassals, who had important rights to the land, not always officially recognized. And the lords who also had obligations. So sort of a system of mutual obligation and not exclusive ownership. And how the advent of wool and sheep and wool and the increase in the value of wool transformed the land and people started enclosing it and taking it and taking it away from these customary users. And how it's just, just an invention, this wide idea of owning the land and having an exclusive right to it. It's just something that was made up because people, some people benefited and they had more power. And as Henry George always said, you know, land ownership is always just the result of some ancient barbarity. And so I, I'm, you know, I think we should look at that, you know, that the land is the commons, whether it's the open space or the land, you know, in the suburb land. And maybe we all have a greater right to it as we're learning about COVID, that there is a commons and unless everyone is helped, we all suffer.
Yeah, that's interesting, being a Western town like we are, Boulder. Obviously, we took the land from indigenous people not so many generations ago. Yet we have an incredibly strong property rights ethic that is just, makes it very, very challenging sometimes to deal with issues. So it's very interesting. Well, I've been reading this really cool book, also kind of bicycle related. So it's the Dutch Blueprint for Urban Vitality: Building the Cycling City by Melissa and Chris Bruntlett. And I actually have family members over in Holland and spend an awful lot of time over there. And I'm always fascinated by a small country that has just put every last value around making cycling the priority everywhere in the country. It's such an amazing thing to see and so inspiring. And I've actually done like little presentations to city staff about the pavement treatments and the intersection treatments and how people kind of chide each other if they misbehave and all these, all these kind of like norms that you have in Holland for getting around on bicycles. So I just love that one. And I think that bicycling is a really great aspiration in Boulder that kind of bonds us all together and kind of is one of those things that we can use to kind of take the positivity and try to, try to get it out to some of these other more difficult things that we deal with. Oh, and I'll just also say, we all on Planning Board read The Color of Law last year.
That's a life-changing book.
Yeah, it's very, very important, I think, for anyone serving on Planning Board to read that book. It's really important to understand that zoning laws are, you know, like the filibuster in the Electoral College, have very racist roots, many of them. And it's important that I understand that.
Yeah, I think, I think that whole explanation of how redlining, we almost use it as a word for some bureaucratic mistake that was made, you know, unfortunate. But it was like, he really explains how it's like this whole system of apartheid that was just as bad as South Africa's regime, as far as I'm concerned. And, and just top to bottom, you know, at the federal level, all the way down to local neighborhood levels. It was a really complete system of apartheid.
And in Boulder, in Boulder, it's not like somewhere else, it's bad and here it was good. In Boulder, and then one little aspect of that that I wasn't so aware of. So I read about some more about the New Deal and the Second World War. But, you know, black American veterans were denied the GI Bill benefits. And so when we had this huge housing boom, even though so many black Americans had moved to industrial cities, when we had that boom, they didn't get the housing benefits of that. And in Boulder, when we have all these federal jobs that were becoming more available to people of color, they didn't have the money and they didn't have the bank support as well to participate in Boulder's big housing boom. So that part, you know, goes a long way through explaining why are we such a lily-white city? We need to reckon with that and have some reparations and it will benefit us all. I'm sorry, I'm on my soapbox there, but.
Well, it is interesting that the more, the more you learn, the more you realize that we owe so much. And people would like to be able to just move on. But the way you heal as a society is to understand when you owe a population something. I think that, you know, that Germany did a, did a much more comprehensive job of dealing with their post-World War II situation in some ways, very intentionally, that has allowed them to be in a better space. I think that we have, reparations are coming up because we, we should have been doing that a long time ago, right? And so it is interesting. And it's interesting that all three of us brought up some aspect of reparations in our discussion.
Thank you for listening to this episode of Sharing Boulder. We hope that you will visit us at sharingboulder.us where you can find links and other information related to our podcast. This episode of Sharing Boulder was produced by David Adamson and Philip Ogrin. Sound and video editing was done by Philip Ogrin. The intro music was sampled from "Osladum" by Gilberto Gil and is available for use under the Creative Commons Sampling Plus license.